Seeger, can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Engouli.
Good evening.
Graham Hewdic.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Seeger is in attendance. Slavens?
Good evening.
Snyderman.
Hello, I'm present.
And appears as though Trustee Foster is absent today.
Great, thank you. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? No?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for March 14th, 2023?
So moved.
Support.
Clerk Seeger's supported by... Okay, Kate, Ms. Borninski. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. So we should probably do public comment after the closed session.
I would recommend doing that.
Yes.
Takes some privilege with the calendar.
That's right. So can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase or lease of real property under MCL 15.268 subsection 1D.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay. Okay, we will go into closed session and we will be right back. Good evening, everyone. Can I have a motion to come back from closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Next, we have public comments on agenda items only. Now, this does not include the water and sewer rate or sidewalk repair program because we'll have a public hearing on the sidewalk repair. So if you have any public comments on the agenda items, you're welcome to come up to the podium. We also will have public comment at the end. Let me see, do I have anyone online who wants to make public comment? We have 10 attendees. If you want to make public comment, you can raise your hand in the Zoom or dial *69 for the phone call in. Not seeing any public comment online, not seeing public comment, not seeing public comment. How about in the room? Okay, sir, you can go to the podium and give us your name, please. Three minutes, please.
I would like to know what criteria we use for determining which slabs got green dots?
We will have a public hearing and you can speak during the public hearing.
Huh?
We're going to have a sidewalk public hearing as an agenda item.
Oh, is it now at this is? I'm sorry, I can hardly hear you.
That's okay, that's okay. I'll talk later. Anyone have public comments on anything except for the sidewalk public hearing? Or water rates? No? We'll be able to speak during those times. All right, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. The next item we're going to do is a presentation on water and sewer rates to begin. And you need to share, don't you? Deputy Director Dave Norwood will run that. You should be able to see here your presentation now.
Thank you, Supervisor Graham Hewdic. My name is Dave Norwood. I'm the Deputy Director of Municipal Services Division. I know we have several items on the agenda tonight from Municipal Services, but we're going to start today and talk about the 2023 water rates. A little bit of spoiler alert, before I start too deep in the session, we rates are going to stay flat. So that's some good news for everybody. So this is a profile of the current system that the township manages and maintains in water and sewer. Pretty extensive. And here is a listing of some of the projects that we are tackling this year. The primary one is Joy Road, a water main project there where we're going to be removing a presser relief valve, which is something that our master plan said to take care of five years ago. So we're now completing those items and we'll have that master plan redone. And you'll see that item as an RBA in next month's meeting, the April meeting. So here's some look at our consumption. Probably a straight line could be taken through that. We don't have a large increases or large decreases right now in over the last 10 years. Here's a look at the expenses on the water, the water system. See, the largest one is actually purchasing the water from GLWA, Great Lakes Water Authority. And here is our breakdown of the expenses between water and sewer. So we're like $34.8 million is our total right now expenses from last year to manage and maintain the Canton Township's water and sewer system. So I'm going to turn it over to Wendy to talk more about the details, the analysis that was done and financed to get to where we're at today.
So, thank you very much. So if you recall, we don't want to belabor a lot of the points, but we just want to remind people how we come up with the rates and how we calculate that. So we always start out with a 2023 budget that the board's adopted. And then we adjust that for known differences. So there's things in the budget that we don't need to collect cash for, such as depreciation expense. So if we say we need to collect $35 million of cash or our budget is for $35 million and $3 million is depreciation expense, we say, all right, out of that $35 million, we don't need $3 million of cash because it's for depreciation, which is a non-cash item and we don't want to pass that along to the residents. We also take a look at what cash we have on hand. So if we have more cash than what our system says we need to have on hand because we have, you know, kind of the minimum and target cash balances, if you will, we help use that to offset any rate increases to the users if we have excess cash. This year, we are going to use about $3.5 million of our cash balances to make sure there's a 0% rate increase to our users of the system. But then, so from there, once we determine how much we need to collect, which this year is about $30 million, we take that $30 million basically and divide it by how much we're expecting consumption to be. So if you remember that slide just a couple ago that Dave had showed, that kind of showed pretty flat usage. It was about 2.5 billion gallons of water each year, roughly, if you were to take a look at that. So we basically say we need to collect $30 million worth of cash divided by 2.5 billion gallons. How much do we need to charge to come up with those, the rates? So that, in a nutshell, that's how we do that calculation to come up with what we need to collect. So, good news is, you can go ahead, keep going to the next one. The good news is, nope, that's good. The good news is, here's what the rates look like for the users. So they're actually going down slightly because our fixed charges are going down slightly for everybody. But the variable charges are staying flat. So you can see that every year or every bimonthly, it's going to be about a $2.40 decrease for everybody, whether you're a low user, average user, or high user of the rate. So it's good news for the township residents. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just want to make a comment. I want to thank you guys again. I know it is a lot of work to do this, get the data from years past. So I do appreciate all the time that you've put into this. So thank you so much.
Stephen?
Yeah, thank you both for the information and again, the presentation. Two things. One is, are we done paying for the water tank? Is that totally out?
The water tower, we are, we have one more payment in '23? Yeah, and '23 is our last year of that.
So next year, that'll come off this calculation?
Correct. And I believe this is also our last year for the sewer debt at Watuah as well. Yeah, so we should be having a number of two debt issuances off of our books in the next couple of years.
Okay, and that was my second question. When I, you know, in years past, those numbers were more 50/50, water versus sewer, and the sewer is now only about 1/3. And is that because of our change to Watuah?
That is due to our change in getting out of the Wayne County sewage disposal system and switching to Yucca. That is the primary, yeah, that is the primary difference. And we'll start to see those come back up. We knew when we switched, it was going to take a drastic decline because it was going to be cheaper. So eventually, it will start to creep up a little bit just because their expenses are going to increase. But we were able to save the residents significant dollars by getting out of Wayne County.
Hey.
Wendy, did GLWA have any rate increase for this year?
They did. If I recall correctly, the rate increases from GLWA was about 2% this year. Was it?
2.8%.
2.8%.
2.8, okay. And we were still able to keep our rates down, so that's good.
We have some excess cash on hand. Like I said, we used about $3.5 million of our available cash balances to offset the rates for the residents for this year. You're welcome.
Good news. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
We're going to have a presentation on the sidewalk repair program now, so everybody can listen in and then we'll start the hearing afterwards.
Good evening, everybody.
Erica?
My name is Erica Hidalgo. I'm a staff engineer here at Canton Township Engineering Services. Today, we're here to do the public hearing for the sidewalk repair program and talk a little bit about it. The sidewalk program was implemented in 1999 due to reduce trip and fall issues, injuries that occurred, and improve the neighborhood and the community as a whole. The way that came about was we lost a landmark case in 1997 that went to the Supreme Court. At that point, they deemed the township responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalks. From that point, we developed an ordinance that's located in chapter 62, section 62, that has all the sidewalk criteria and information, and that can be seen on our website. The program began with the oldest subdivisions first, and we later consolidated with what was remaining to go through the township. It took us about 16 years to get through the first cycle. Right now, we're currently zoned for 12 years and working in zone eight, eight years into the second cycle. So concerns about the program are typically handled through my department, through engineering. We get complaints that come in, requests. We look at all the sidewalk that's scheduled for repair based on the zone. Again, this year is zone eight. You can see on our website which zone we're going into and where we've left going through there. This year, we're in zone eight. There's a list of the subdivisions there, if any of you are in those subdivisions. It's located east of Sheldon, south of Ford, west of Hagerty, and north of Cherry Hill. The subdivisions are Brentwood Estates, Cavalier Village North, Cavalier Village South, Cavalier Village West, McIntyre Gardens, and McIntyre Gardens 1 and McIntyre Manor. There's three different portions of the sidewalk program that we're working on every year. We start with the past warranty work after the concrete's been done. A year later, we go in there and inspect to make sure there's no issues with the concrete that the township had placed. Anything that's under warranty is covered for one year. We also look at the current construction year, which most of you, if you're in here for the public hearing slated for repair, we're going to be entering into that in the summer here. We also look at future markings as we move forward for next year's program. So most of you, if you have any markings that you see now, those were marked last year in the fall in preparation for this year's work. The sidewalk that we have includes commercial and residential parcels that are located along our main roads. When we went through the first cycle, those locations, we didn't really look at. We just stayed within the subdivision. Now, we're looking at sidewalks on our main roads. And as most of our board members know, we're trying to connect sidewalks and trails and make them a better user-friendly. The defective sidewalk is marked in two colors, red or green. Red is township and green is for resident. As I mentioned, the strategic plan for the township board was to maintain these sidewalks, make things very accessible, and connect sidewalk where we can, which we're continuously evaluating where the sidewalk, where improvements can be made. So some of the examples that we look at when we're in doing a sidewalk repair, and that's listed in our ordinance, those are just some examples. But we look at sidewalk displacements that are 3/4 of an inch or more. We look at sidewalk that's spalling, that's more than 50% of it scaled off. It looks like gravel on the surface. It's severely deteriorating. Other examples are spider cracking or where you see fine line cracking near the edges or joints of slabs. Those are sidewalks that have defects in them that fail from the underneath side. And when the pressure's released, when we do that work, it ends up being where we have to take multiple sidewalk flags. That's why sometimes if you see something and you're the question, why is it going on? We try to minimize what we can for our residents, but we know when there's sidewalk that's failing, it needs to be replaced. The cracked sidewalks, if there's more than two cracks or it goes through the entire width or length of the slab, those are marked for repair. Ponding water, that's another thing that we also look at. It's hard to tell when we're out there necessarily marking the sidewalk because you can't mark it when it's wet. But sometimes we can see through the discoloration of the sidewalk or the grade of the sidewalk that we know it's holding water. And we try to work with our residents to see if, you know, if there's improvements we can make with the sidewalk or something that we can do in place of doing a repair on the sidewalk to alleviate the ponding. Some of the things that we see in the sidewalk program are also back pitching or severe slope towards the road. Those create displacements from tree root growth. It could be from utilities or just from general grade of somebody maybe driving on a sidewalk where they shouldn't be. But it happens through a number of reasons where you have pitch issues with the sidewalk. Utility repairs, that's another example. When there's utility companies that come in, if they damage the sidewalk, we repair that. Those are usually marked in red. Sometimes we don't know unless a resident tells us there was a utility company out there. So, but most of the time, we know where the utility companies are working. Sidewalk that has a utility structure that we own and maintain, sanitary sewer manholes, water gate wells, those are covered by the township. And any flags around that need, that would require repair with those structures, those are marked in red. The storm manholes that you see, those are the structures that have holes in the lid. Those are owned by Wayne County, but the township has been very kind in, it's not in the ordinance, but they've been very kind to cover sidewalk that touches a storm structure. And then any subsequent sidewalk flags that radiate outward from that storm structure are the homeowner's, our residents' responsibility to maintain those. Some of the sidewalk ramps that you'll see, those are looked at. If there's any issues with the ramps, those are usually marked in red for the township to maintain. We look at if it goes across the street to someone's driveway or there's not a receiving ramp. There's other utilities and whatnot there. We try to evaluate those. But if it goes to a driveway, it's removed. It can, it's not, we can't put a ramp in if it goes to someone's driveway because it's not safe. Medians and common park areas, any sidewalk that's in a common area or park area, including the sidewalk ramps, if your homeowners association maintains that, those things are marked in green for them. And that's usually what you pay, when you pay your dues, will go towards some of those repairs that we have. Your sidewalk approach or apron, the area located between the sidewalk and the edge of the road, those need to be maintained by the property owner. Sometimes when we repair the sidewalk, if the drive approaches badly failing or looks like there's going to be a severe displacement after repairing the sidewalk, we mark those for repair as well. But, you know, we're happy to go over those with you. Part of the notification with the sidewalk program, we advertise for that. We have done that. It went out on March 22nd. And estimate letters were mailed to homeowners with the price in March to include the public hearing responsibility, the contractor, and any other important numbers that you need to obtain permits if you hire someone other than the township contractor to do the work. 60 days from today, we'll begin the sidewalk repair. So anything marked with a green dot, you have one of the following things you can do. You can hire somebody, pull those permits, have that work started and/or completed by June 1st. Or you don't have to do anything. And when the township gets to your location, we will do the work. And invoices are typically sent out for that work after it's been done. And then the due date is determined by the treasurer when those are due. So again, the program will begin about June 1st. Miscellaneous areas, they start, they're probably going to start on those first and work their way towards the scheduled zone eight. And we anticipate this sidewalk program being completed at the end of July or through the end of August. If any of you have any questions or anything, I'll be here. I have somebody that's going to help me. If you want to just give your name and number and have me call you tomorrow. But I'll leave it up to anybody that has any questions or if there's anything further. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Erica. So what we're going to do is I'm going to take a motion to open the public hearing and then we will take public comment. So we won't have a back and forth, but you can give your public comment at the podium. And then if you have questions about your particular properties, we'll have our engineering team out in the lobby and they can take down your addresses and schedule time to go to your house or answer any questions that you have. That's what we've done before, correct, Erica? Yes. Okay, great. So can I have a motion to start the public hearing on sidewalks?
Madam Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear comments on the necessity of sidewalk repairs pursuant to the Township's sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk repair program policy, and as provided in Public Act 80 of the Public Acts of 1989 at 7:30 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Okay, so if you, who would like to come up and ask any questions, just give public comment. And then if you have any questions, you can go out and speak to Erica in the hall and the rest of our engineering team also. Would anyone like to make any public comment at this time in the sidewalks? Give us your name, please.
Moved here two and a half years ago. And in about 50 years of homeownership, I've never been held responsible for the sidewalk. So this took me by surprise. Not only am I responsible for the sidewalk, but every slab in front of my property, 14 in total, were marked with green dots. I can't see anything wrong with them. The property next to me and next to that person, they got nothing marked. And their slabs, in some cases, are worse than mine. Okay? Not that I'm saying there's anything wrong with mine. And I'm wondering if you considered mudjacking. In one particular case, the road has broken and sunk, which has caused a dip for two slabs in front of my house. And repairing it without repairing the road seems kind of foolish. But I have learned in looking into it that the homeowners association has to come up with a third of the money before anybody's going to do anything about the road. And I've also learned that our homeowners association basically has no money and hasn't had money for years. So, you know, the homeowner, in my particular case, between the devil and the deep blue sea here. We can't fix the roads because we don't have the money. You're going to go ahead and fix the sidewalks, which may or may not survive construction repairs of the road. And as I read the act, there has to be some consideration with respect to safety, well-being of the public. And I don't see anything wrong with the sidewalk in front of my house that would indicate that's a problem. Sidewalks look fine. So because you're not considering mudjacking and because you've gone ahead and put so many green dots on mine, it's starting to look like a make-work project. And it took me, oh, probably a month to find out that what those green dots represented. Nobody came and put a notice on my door as to what they were. I had no idea. I was finally able to buttonhole a neighbor that seemed to know something. And they said, oh, you know, you'll probably end up having to pay for all those. Really? Thanks for letting me know.
All right, thanks, sir. So you can meet with Erica and the team.
Can you please give us your name and your address, sir?
Robert Bruett, 44089 Harsdale Drive. We front Lake Harsdale. Every time it rains, I got this massive lake on the road in front of my house because the road sinks there. Anyway, that's not apparently your concern. But, you know, I think, I think the green dots are fairly arbitrary. And I don't think that all of the bad slabs on the street were identified. And so...
So meet with our team and you can give your address and talk to them about the next steps. Thank you. Anyone else? Please give your name and address so we can record it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Steve Kohler. I live at 1195 Brookline in Cavalier Village. So similar experience. I, in my home, every square footage of concrete in the right-of-way has a green dot. 90% of that was the impact of some water work that happened maybe three or four years ago. And it all looks very good, very clean. I'm wondering if the issue is, and I'll talk to engineering after, but maybe a slight slant that puts it out of compliance. Now, I acknowledge the need for safe sidewalks. I use sidewalks all the time, walk my dog. In this case, my sidewalks look what I would think is exceptional. And being the case that they're maybe three, four years old, and now that the cost is being pushed on to me to fix, it makes me wonder how good that investment was three or four years ago to actually do that sidewalk work. That being said, the cost for me is pretty high based on my estimate. I assume that other people are going to look at this and, you know, it might be a big hit to their finances. One of the things I wanted to bring up was my father was a concrete inspector for Clinton Township. And when they ran their sidewalk program, the money that it costed to revitalize the sidewalks, they would then roll into the taxes 0% over five years. I was wondering if something like that was an option to maybe help mitigate this, you know, what for me is a large one-time purchase this fiscal year.
All right, thank you.
Of it rolling over to your taxes?
Yeah.
But there is a 6% fee. So there is a charge for that. But you can do that if you can't pay it all at once.
All right. And real quick, one point I forgot to make. The presentation was valuable because it did mention that any work related to Canton-owned utilities should be covered by Canton. And I feel as though my sidewalks, having been replaced by the water work, should fall under that. But I'll take that up with the engineering offline.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Next?
I'm Dennis Poet, 1210 Brookline. Live across the street from Steve. We've got, I live on a corner lot and I have two problems. On one side, the north side, they put in the new pipelines, the new water lines. And every place that they dug holes to put the taps for our neighbors and that across the street, the sidewalks are sinking. And it's just, I don't feel I should have to pay for it because, you know, we went through all of the water. I've been here 20 years and probably 12 times. through all of the water, I've been here twenty years, and probably twelve times in our block, you know what the water main problems are. Also, I live on Brookline. Now, Brookline Drive is terrible. It's going to wash out, it's undermined, it's, it's a sinkhole. And Steve's house, the, there's three or four houses they want to replace, all the sidewalks, because they've tilted toward the road. Well, the road is going to wash out. The one neighbor, they did the right thing a few years ago, and they put in a whole new driveway. Well, a few years went by, you know, four, five years. Now, they want to replace the sidewalk and the two slabs between the sidewalk and the road, and it's because the road is caving in. I mean, you can see it. There's a hole in front of my house, and you can see the pavement's down four inches, and there's a six-inch gap underneath it, and you can see where the pavement is. My next-door neighbor wants to fix their driveway, and they can't do it because it's just going to wash away because of the road. And my question is, you know, can the township help us? I mean, the county says it's, they can't fix it, we can't come up with the money, and you're fining us because of the problem with the road. And I mean, that's just not fair. And I really think that, you know, somebody ought to look at it, because it's a terrible problem. And why should we spend our money, and then in ten years, you're going to come back through, and you're going to do it again? And you know, it's just the way it is.
All right, thank you. Yes, speak to Erica. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Erica, Erica's going to...
We're the neighbor.
Okay.
I mean, it's horrible.
Our poor brother lives from, I have a video.
Yeah.
Completely crumbling, and sinking.
So we go talk to these people?
So, we'll speak with you.
Yeah, Erica, our engineering team will work with you. Erica, did you have something to say?
I just wanted to say something with some of the comments to help people out, maybe. The sidewalks that we looked at, we haven't been in your neighborhoods for the scheduled zone, probably anywhere from fifteen to twenty years, so it's been a long time since we've been through there. The one project that you're talking about in Cavalier Village, we did do a water main replacement project. I got some information from the consultant engineer that did that work, and I was looking at all the addresses in that subdivision with what we marked, and anything that was related to that water main project, if it was put in incorrectly, those slabs are going to be the township's responsibility. I wouldn't expect a resident to pay for something that we put in incorrectly. So if there's anything related to the water main project, I have a list of those addresses, and I went through those, and I'll be happy to go through those again, to make sure that if anybody has any of those issues, they're not paying for that again. Something they need to keep in mind, though, when we look at the sidewalk, and another resident mentioned, there was nothing wrong with it. When we repair a sidewalk, most people think of the obvious, like when we did the first cycle of the program, a lot of that stuff was the obvious displacements, cracked slabs, crumbling slabs, but if we replace that, we got to correct a problem. And if there's a problem with grades or slopes that exceed the American Disability Act, a two percent is the maximum, if it exceeds that, we can't put it back incorrectly. So there are slabs that are continued, that we might add two, three, four, or sometimes a whole section of them, if we have to to correct that problem. I'm happy to look at all that with anybody, if, and walk them through that. Anybody that calls me, I'm happy to do that. We want you to be comfortable with the program. It's a maintenance program, and it's to correct the problems, not just the obvious. So that's, that's something that I wanted to mention. And as far as like leveling or mudjacking, that's not a service that the township provides. There's a provision in the ordinance that allows you to do that. If you wanted to look out for, seek out anybody to do that work, you're welcome to do that. Make sure it's done before we get there, and absolutely call us so we can reevaluate that. We do have some people that have leveling done, and it's not done correctly. It doesn't meet the American Disability Act. So some of our residents choose not to pay their contractors, and they wait for us to come out and reevaluate it and make sure it's corrected. So it could save you money if there's no defects with the slabs, but I can't speak to that or make that recommendation, but that definitely is an option for you.
Thank you, Erica. And as Erica said, she'll come out to your house, she'll work with you and see what is up, what needs to be done. Is there anyone else that would like to say something?
If we're so worried about the sidewalk, why don't you end up with people parking on the sidewalk?
Thank you. Thanks, sir. We do have ordinances against that also.
You can't find a wheelchair when there's a car parked across the sidewalk. You have to walk the road.
Anyone else? Would you like to come to the podium, please, and give your name and address?
My name is Elizabeth Thompson. I live at 1806 Rainier Boulevard, and I've been there for forty-six years, and I've been very happy in Canton. The only thing that my neighbors and I talk about everything is the estimates that were sent out, and I've had, I was going to do my own driveway this past year, and I've had three or four companies come out, measure it and everything like that, and all of the, all the measurements were different between each company and between what I've got from Canton, too, and I will go with Canton. But when you add up, like, I know I have to have my approach done, it's just falling apart, but if it's measured wrong, that's a lot of money when you, you know, at nine dollars a square foot for a hundred square feet, everything, if it's that much off, who do we talk to about getting things really accurately measured to do?
It would be our engineering team. They, they'll come out to your house. I know Erica, our lovely Erica, I guess it's, she, her team...
Been a big help. I talked to her on the phone. She's been wonderful.
She is, yes, and she'll come out, make sure the measurements are correct.
And she explained, she has it tonight, but explained to me, too, how it's going to be billed and when, how the payments are to be made, so which...
Good, I'm good. She's very helpful. Our team is very helpful. Anyone else? I know Erica and your team's going to have a long line out in the hall, we know that. Let me just check online to see if anyone, oh, sure, would you like to come up? Name and address, please.
Brian Utley at 42450 Salts. Again, a happy, happy Canton resident. I have some, I've been trying to figure out the sidewalk program for a while, so I think there's a few confusing points, possibly. One is the dates, and I'm sure Erica can clear that up, but I've, I've been looking and trying to figure out when things began, and you know, when, when we know about what's happening, and then when the work, the work begins, and we have to have the work done by the certain time. I heard you say that it starts in six days, but then I get a different...
Sixty days.
Sixty days, thank you. All right, sixty days. All right, that's better, thank you. All right, that's good. The other big problem that's really for, in my mind, is I and a number of, of course, my residents have a lot of dots right now, but we haven't received the letters. Has everyone received the letters? If we have dots and we haven't received letters, are we not in the program? I know, I speak for a number of my neighbors around me, we're wondering if that's, if that's the case. We are in Zone 8. I checked carefully the roads that you just listed off. Yep, we're in that zone. So are we in the program for this year? And if not, are we going to get bumped to next year? If we get bumped to next year, and we decide to do the work ourselves, hiring, you know, so want to do either replacement or mudjacking, whatever we do, can we get, do we need a waiver for the next time you guys come around, so you don't put dots or something, something like that? So lots of questions, sorry.
Yes, you can check. I'm sure we mailed it out, and we can figure out what's going on here. Thank you.
Okay, we'll talk to Erica afterwards. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Oh, Erica, go ahead.
Zone 8, that was, that's on our map, that shows all the subdivisions that we're doing. We're realistically not going to be able to replace all the sidewalks in Zone 8, so it was bid out as a two-year program. So if your subdivision's in Zone 8, you haven't gotten your letter yet, you will get the letter by the end of summer, we'll hold a second public hearing for that work. Unlike the residents that are scheduled, that got their letters, we're going to start June 1st. Anybody that's in that zone that we haven't gotten their letter, that we don't get to do in that work this year, they will be able to start first thing in the spring when the weather breaks. So if you know you have markings in front of your home, and you haven't gotten your letter, we can evaluate it, go over it with you, but you have a little bit more time to get that repair work done if you want to seek somebody else to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm looking, anyone else in the room first? All right, I'm looking online to see if anyone has any questions on the public hearing for sidewalks. You can raise your hand. Don't, okay, don't see anyone, okay, anyone online, raise your hand, online, don't see anything, okay, great, thank you. Oh, we do have one just popped up. Okay, so I have Dennis. Okay, Dennis, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Can you give your address, please?
613 North Corrin Boulevard.
All right, thank you. Go ahead with your comment.
I live on a corner lot. I have thirty-seven sidewalk slabs marked for replacement. None of them are cracked, none of them are failing. At most, they're from width to width, a half-inch slope towards the road. I've called Erica at least two times, if not three, and asked for someone to come out from your department and go over with me on why these need replaced. I still have not seen anyone come over and ask, and talk to me. All I've been told is that I can speak at this meeting, so that's what I'm doing. You're asking me to pay $10,000 by the end of this fall, forty-five days from the day I'm invoiced, invoiced, to pay $10,000. Besides the fact that in these economic times, where am I going to come up with that money? Or you can put a lien on my house. This is just ridiculous, in my opinion. My, my, my apron of my driveway, you say I need to replace, I have a drain at the end of my driveway and the road. The roads are all cracked up in Cavalier Village. There's a big pothole that's been there for four years since I've lived here, that still is not repaired or replaced. My daughter has ran into it with her bike one time and injured herself and has a scar from it. But no one seems to care about the roads, seeing how this is a beautification project. So I would like some understanding on why we are responsible for public sidewalks, but no one's responsible for the roads. What do we pay taxes for?
Okay, thank you. I'm sure Erica will return the call. If she hasn't, you can call the main number and just leave her, we'll make sure it gets to her.
As I've said, I've spoke with her twice on the phone, and she said that I can talk to you here.
Yes, this is a public hearing. You've made your comment, thank you. And if you, and she, if you want to...
So I'm allowed to make a comment, but I don't get an answer?
If you, this is a public comment time. If you want someone to come out to your house to talk to you about it, we can schedule that.
That would be great. Please do that.
All right, thank you.
Because I'm not there to talk to Erica right now, so I need someone to come out and talk to me and show me why my sidewalk needs replacing.
We will do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else online? Anyone else going once, twice? Okay, great, nothing, thank you. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing after hearing the comments on the necessity of sidewalk repairs to the Township Sidewalk Ordinance Sidewalk Repair Program policy and as provided in Public Act 80 of the Public Acts of 1989 at 7:52.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Are there any board comments or questions? I know, Stephen, you had wanted to make a comment about the roads program.
Oh, I just want to make sure people are aware of the roads program, where the township funds up to ninety percent of the road replacement. The road replacement is not the responsibility of the township, but the Roads Millage that passed a few years ago, it will take care of most roads. Now, they cannot be privately owned roads, so it would have to be evaluated whether or not your roads are privately owned or not, but it does take a neighborhood to come together and fund that extra ten percent of, of the roads. So if you don't have an active HOA, it would behoove you to activate it and, and take it over, perhaps, if that's the case, that it's not being active, to help make that happen, so, but it's something, if you haven't talked to the township about your specific roads, it would be recommended that you do contact the municipal services, David, your team, to talk about the specific situation for your neighborhood.
Just for clarification, I started playing with Wayne County in 2016, and I was to run a little one. I went back and forth, I spoke to Canton first, you said it was Wayne County's responsibility, Wayne County then told me it was Canton's responsibility, and then went back to Wayne County again, and so I've gone back and forth with them. I need to know, so are you telling me that Canton is responsible for ninety percent of the pain, or...
Not responsible, but the program can now fund up to ninety percent of the replacement. So it depends on the situation.
Yes.
You'd have to work with municipal services to, to understand your specific neighborhood, how it was built, whether it was made a private road or a public road and things, and nuances like that, that we probably can't discuss here, but it is available, if it is under the right circumstances, for the funding to occur up to ninety percent.
Yes, and we did do a, a presentation on that not too long ago, and I believe we have the roads that are, subdivisions have put in to be fixed this year.
Correct, yes, through the Roads Millage program.
Yeah, it might not be for a year or two, or, you know, it takes time. On the website.
Yeah, it is on, it is on the Township's website, yeah.
Thanks.
I don't think we have public comment right now, though, so...
No, no, that's okay. We'll, we'll have public comment at the end, but does the board want to say anything else about the sidewalk program? Michael?
I moved in December, and, but prior, I lived in Cherry Hill Orchards, and Erica tagged our neighborhood in 2018, and that was an expensive year for my family. I understand exactly where every one of you are at. The consolation you have is that everybody in Canton Township is going to be in the exact same spot you have, you are at. If you live in a public subdivision, this program is going to go through, and any sidewalk slab that doesn't meet the standards is going to be hit with a green dot or a red dot, and it's hard. It's always hard, and it can be a very expensive process, so my heart goes out to all of you. I do think there was some wisdom in how they set up the Township Ordinance. They put the onus on the individual property owner, as opposed to the government. They did not want you paying to fix my sidewalk, and they do not want me paying to fix your sidewalk. That is not the approach we took to roads. Canton Township voters in 2018 passed our local Roads Millage. That money is going to fix Wayne County-owned roads, it's going to fix the major roads, Canton Center, right? Just pulled all of Canton Center out and replaced it, did a great job doing that. It's also going towards state roads and neighborhoods who are willing to participate in a matching program, and that's because thirty percent of Canton residents live in private subdivisions. They, they can't receive any, any public money to fix the roads at all. They are required to fix one hundred percent of the cost of their roads in perpetuity. So almost every single site condominium that's been built, I think, in the last thirty or forty years, those are all privately owned roads, and so when they receive these degradation, they have to repair the sidewalk and the roads themselves. So there's two schools of thought. One is we all pay to fix a sidewalk in front of one of our houses, or we pay as individuals, and that's the way it's been set up, and those are the rules of the game, and, and But I, I'm a big fan of us not being civilly liable, both you as individuals and the township in general. If somebody trips and falls on your property, I'm also, you know, I, I want to live in a community where people can travel safely, um, to school, to work, and so on and so forth. So, it's not an easy thing, and I know, you know, it can be challenging to understand why certain slabs get, get hit with that, with that red, with that green dot or not. But, um, but I do know Erica. I know that she's one of the most patient, patient people I've ever met in my entire life. Every year, she gets put in this hot seat and she takes all of these arrows for her, uh, for us. And I am extremely grateful for you for doing that, Erica. Thank you. And thank you for your patience. And she will be able to answer any of the questions that you have. Sometimes the answer might be, "I'm sorry. There's nothing we can do for you," and that's unfortunate. But you will never get anything other than the truth from her.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Diane?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, I know, you know, in years past, when residents get the invoice, they don't look and see that it's due the following year. It can be rolled over to your taxes over five years. Some residents even make monthly payments. They come in with their invoice and they slowly chip away. So there's a lot of different, we're always willing to work with you because I know we've all been through, we all had to have our, you know, sidewalks replaced. Something that's needed to be done, but we do want to work with you. So just so you know, when you get that invoice, you can always make payments with us or have it rolled over, slowly pay it off.
Thank you. So, yeah, Erica can help you with the programs. Yes. Yeah, she can. So Erica's are great, as what's been said, she's very efficient, her team. She'll come out and talk to you. And as also been said, we have the, the roads program. I've watched subdivisions take long sections of roads and fix a little bit at a time, over time, and it's gone great for some of the subdivision. If it's a, if it's a public road, like Michael said, you know, with the privates, we can't do that. Also, I heard something about potholes. So if you do have a pothole, there is a 1-800, I'm sorry, 1-888 ROAD CREW. So call for those. They'll come and patch up those potholes. And as Erica also said, if something's been done because of a drain being fixed or drain breaking, she'll look at that also and she'll contemplate that. So she, obviously, we hire somebody to go out and mark, and then if anyone has issues, she, her and her team come out and they're very fair.
Yeah, so, um, I, I can understand all the frustration that you have and you have come forth and said what you, you know, I understand it is expensive and in, um, in this hard economic time, sometimes it's hard, but I think the township is willing to work with you. The engineering department, I, I understand some of you have called and there is only one Erica. So probably she is, please be patient and we will send someone to your neighborhoods to take care of your roads. And, um, there is also, you can work with the treasurer's office. They are willing to work with you for different, you know, payment plans, as our treasurer Slavens said. And, uh, yeah, all, and neighborhoods, we have the Road Millage and that really has helped with even fixing the neighborhoods. And neighborhoods have the option to opt in. This year, my neighborhood opted in to get the roads fixed and they're really bad in the neighborhood with, you know, big gaps in them and, we were asked by the homeowners association, would you, would we like to, we were asked to vote if we wanted to put in the extra money to do this fixing the roads. And it's a, it's a small amount and that kind of helps with participating in our Roads Millage program. So there is that option of fixing the roads. And I understand some of the roads that you mentioned here, the Brookline Road is really bad and probably we can work with you on that, so.
Thank you. I think Clerk Segras also has received something he wants to read.
I received a, a public comment through email. It was done through email because there's no chat function on the virtual. And this is for a resident who struggles with speaking, so they have asked that I read their comment. I, um, I'm just going to preface, I'm going to read this verbatim because there is an expletive in here and it is not mine. Quote, uh, this is from David, David Gordon. Quote, "I know the, uh, the township is doing the best it can, but there is a shitload of sidewalks. I know because I walked miles of sidewalks in Canton." End quote.
All right, thank you. Any more board comments? All right, great, thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the attached resolution requiring replacement of sidewalks in Brentwood Estates, Cavalier Village North, Cavalier Village South, Cavalier Village West, McIntyre Gardens, McIntyre Gardens Number One, McIntyre Manor, and miscellaneous locations as indicated on the attached list and published in the PNW on March 22nd, 2023.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So Erica and the team will be out in the hall. Thank you. Next item is a resolution declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month in Canton Township.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month in Canton Township. Whereas the year 2023 marks the 55th anniversary of the passage of the Fair, Federal Fair Housing Act, Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, whereas the law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all citizens without regard to race, color, religion, sex, family status, disability, or national origin. Whereas the equality of opportunity for all is a fundamental policy of this nation, state, and township. And whereas the barriers which diminish the rights and limit the options of any citizen will ultimately diminish the rights of all citizens, now therefore be it resolved, the Charter Township of Canton, Board of Trustees designates the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in Canton Township and encourage the residents of our community to join us in its observance.
Support. Made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of an annual maintenance and technical support agreement for CityWorks Asset Management Software. Consider, uh, C2, consider adoption of a resolution for approval of application for additional MERS service credit by employee. Consider, item C3, consider approving an increase to the blanket purchase order issued to Kent Communications Incorporated. C4, consider approval of conference expense for township supervisor. C5, consideration of second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 5, Sections 2-240 and Sections 2-244 of the Canton Code of Ordinances. And item C6, consideration of second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 50, Parks and Recreation, Article 2, titled Department of Leisure Services of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we move on to the general calendar. Item G1, consider award of a contract to Cipron Contracting Incorporated for the 2023 Local Road Millage Improvements.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve to Cipron Contracting Incorporated for a total amount, a total award of $2,6,871.24 for 2023, and to approve the continuation of this contract as described in the background for 2024 through 2027 to Cipron Contracting Incorporated, including the approval of purchase orders in 2024 and 2027 in an amount not to exceed the board's approved budget for each year, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by trustee, uh, sorry, Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township has publicly bid the 2023 Local Road Millage Improvements and received four bids ranging from 1,800, to $2,292,439.50. Our design engineer, Spalding De Decker, has reviewed the bids for accuracy and members of Engineering Services and Finance and Budget have reviewed the proposals under our responsible contracting finance policy. From that, Engineering Services recommends award of the Local Roads Millage Program for budget years 2023 to 2027 to Cipron Contracting Incorporated. The 2023 award amount is for $1,824,428.40 with a 10% contingency of $182,442,84 for a total award of $2 million, I'm sorry, for a total award of $2,6,871.24. Deputy, I'm sorry, Dr. Dave, do you want, do you want to throw some of those numbers around? Do you have anything else to say?
Well, I, I know it's not 182 billion, but.
Yes, that's right.
But, uh, I think this is a timely item based upon the, the sidewalk public hearing. An opportunity that we will work with residents for this program. This is an opportunity for them to get their work done. But for this year, um, I don't, I don't have anything else to add, so, but I'm open for questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but just a comment that we are seeing that our, um, you know, our responsible contracting recommendations are being used and guidelines and I'm seeing that more and more and I'm happy that we are using that and we are getting, well, we are getting more than one contractor to bid on our projects.
Yes, we are, we are seeing it working out. So I had to thank Finance. Michael Shepard's doing a good job on this.
Very good. Michael?
Yeah, I think with that, you know, one of the, one of the concerns a lot of folks had, I think, with, um, doing the roads was, um, I mean, you hear people talk about a, a lot of things, but one of them is the, this notion that, um, that we have to go with the lowest bidder, the lowest bidder, um, the lowest qualified bidder. And what's cool about how we do contracts here in Canton Township is we, we actually go with the lowest responsible bidder. And, um, so we ensure that we are, are not finding ourselves in a business situation with somebody who meets the bare minimum and then does this kind of work that doesn't, that doesn't stand the test of time. So I'm grateful so far and have noticed that, that large improvement in, in roads.
Anyone else? Okay, so, yeah, the, um, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider word of a contract and purchase order to Cadillac Asphalt Incorporated for the 2023 Major Roads Asphalt Project for the 2023 Road Improvement Program and approve a contract amendment with Fishbeck LLC for construction, engineering, and testing.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order and award of contract with Cadillac Asphalt for the 2023 Major Roads Asphalt Project Construction in the amount of $3,051,876.26 plus a 10% contingency of $305,188 for a total of $3,357,64.26 from the fund, subject fund, and to approve a contract amendment and increase purchase order, increase the subject purchase order with Fishbeck LLC under their existing master services agreement for CE Services for the 2023 Major Roads Asphalt Project in the amount of $470,442 plus a 10% contingency of $47,044 for a total of $517,486 from the subject fund and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The designs of Lily Road from Palmer to Michigan Ave, Lots Road from Palmer to Michigan Ave, and Sheldon Road from Warren to Sheldon Center for the planned 2023 road improvements on the major roads was completed in January 2023 and the projects designated as major roads asphalt. Requests for proposals were issued to the public on February 9th, 2023. Five contractors submitted proposals for this work on March 2nd, ranging from $3,051.26 to $3,639.1. Cadillac Asphalt Incorporated was apparent low bidder at $3,051,876.26. The responsible contracting proposal evaluation also resulted in Cadillac Asphalt obtaining the highest score of 268 with the next highest score at 244. Do, do you have anything to add, Mr.?
Nothing to add, uh, other than we're very excited, coming off of a strong year last year with the, the major roads projects and we are looking to begin construction early April. Everything's weather dependent and wrap up end of September.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Great. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider site plan approval for BJ's Wholesale Club Automobile Filling Station.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, the approval of site plan for BJ's, sorry, um, for BJ's Wholesale Automobile Filling Station. Whereas project sponsor has requested site plan approval for an automobile filling station on subject tax parcel at 43690 Ford Road. And whereas Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and applicable criteria voted 5 to 2 to recommend approval of the request with conditions as it is consistent with the Ford Sheldon Newman planned development and meets the requirements of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the BJ's Wholesale Club Automobile Filling Station site plan and planning, subject planning application on the subject tax parcel at 43690 Ford Road, subject to all state, county, township requirements, and subject to execution of the PD agreement after satisfactory review by township legal counsel.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. BJ's, BJ's Wholesale Club is a retail superstore that recently occupied the vacated JCPenney at 43690 Ford Road on the north side of Ford Road between Sheldon and Morton Taylor. BJ's Wholesale Club parcel consists of 104,718 square foot building, a 415 space parking lot, and an access drive directly from Morton Taylor Road as well as several cross access points to adjacent sites. BJ's proposes to construct a gas station on a vacant portion, portion of the parcel to the south as listed, which is currently heavily vegetated. Both parcels are part of the Ford Sheldon Newman PDD, which is originally approved in 2004. At its meeting on October 11th, 2022, the Township Board approved an amendment to the PDD to allow for the proposed gas station subject to conditions. At its meeting on February 6th, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the BJ's Wholesale Club Automobile Filling Station site plan, subject to conditions. If the site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Engineering Services Division and Building and Inspection Services Division for review prior to construction. Dave, do you have anything to add?
I do not, uh, Supervisor Graham Hudek, but, uh, the community planner, Patrick Sloan, is here also to answer any questions about this, uh, project.
Thank you, as well as the applicant. Uh, Patrick, do you have anything to add? Okay, um, any questions from the board?
Yeah, um, I had a few conversations today about the, um, the traffic study, and I understand that there were some concerns on the Planning Commission as well about the traffic study. One thing that stood out to me when I was reading the traffic study is that some of the data that was used from MDOT was from 2010, and I am wondering, just if, if there maybe had been a way to use more recent data. To me, you know, using data from 2010, if I use that for, example, um, setting water rates or, um, you know, deciding about what the population of the township is, that would be out of date. So I'm wondering, um, you know, i- is there any way you could walk me through why the decision was made to, to use that data rather than more recent data?
Um, I can answer, uh, part of that question. We had to follow it up with the applicant about the traffic data in terms of using the 2010 counts, and, uh, the applicant had, um, gone through the study and noted that 2010 was the year when the traffic counts were last available from MDOT, uh, which were pre-COVID traffic counts. And we've been seeing during, uh, COVID and in the wake of COVID, uh, traffic counts are still down in many areas from where they were pre-COVID. And so what the applicant did was to use the last available numbers from MDOT, which, um, in this case were from 2010. And then, um, rather than adjusting them, which, um, they noted would be showing a traffic decrease in the area, they just kept the numbers the same as 2010 and built their model out from there. Uh, so that was a, that was a response from the applicant on that question this afternoon.
Thank you. Brian Ammon, on behalf of BJ's, uh, just to follow up a little more detail on that. Brian Ammon, on behalf of BJ's, just to follow up a little more detail on that, there was a question ultimately around what data you can select, and MDOT had put out an advisory not to use anything essentially post-COVID or during COVID on. And so we did use the 2010 because it was the highest watermark that they last had data on, but then we also applied a growth factor to that, just inherently saying, okay, well let's assume a growth rate over, over years. And then in application of the actual data as it applies to this fueling center, they then took the data from the Chesterfield location that they currently have in use in Chesterfield, Michigan. The reason they chose that location is it is the highest use location in the country for BJ's. So they took worst case scenario of uses, applied them to the best data they had with the growth factor, and ultimately came to that. They then, their traffic engineer then, just to be sure, then sent the information out for a peer review to a third party engineer to see whether they were validating or not, and they came back and ultimately thought it was the best way to approach this. It was then submitted, obviously you're aware, you know, the township engineers have reviewed the data as well, as well as, you know, it's an MDOT road and it's, there's Wayne County. So we, and this was actually an issue, you may recall, maybe not, in October, because it's really the quest, one of the questions when it comes up as to the use approval of the filling station, it came up then as, because it's one of the criteria that you would consider is its impact as it relates to infrastructure and utilities and those kinds of things. So we went through a fairly detailed explanation back at that time as to how we got there and why we got there and the conclusions we came to on that. And so the other thing I'd point out simply that, so trying to use that data like that, we thought ultimately made the most sense, but then also applying the Chesterfield location. The other part of it is, as we, it was raised during the planning, the site plan deliberation, ultimately the question before that we find ourselves in the posture is, does the plan before you comply with essentially the plan that was approved with the use approval in October and the ordinance requirements of the township? And I think you'll find the report from the Planning Department, as well as your various professional staff have indicated that it does comply for that. And then in the end, we've also taken note that we're fortunate in the sense that this site could have been independently developed for commercial use unrelated to BJ's. And had it been that, it would have essentially been a whole new use on the site, generating its own traffic and doing these things. What we've shown in the traffic study is in fact, this is an ancillary use to the BJ's, and a very small percentage of the actual visits there are going to be incrementally new visits. Most of them are going to be people who came to shop at the store and then got fuel. And so, so essentially, we are ending up with a lower impact of a use than you could otherwise under the zoning ordinance. That was the conversation we had back in October about how, in terms of its ultimate impact on traffic. And in the end, we also know the township is contemplating undertaking the improvement to Ford Road in terms of the, the islands and the boulevards and things like that, which we know will ultimately reshape the entirety of traffic on Ford Road for all of us. And so we're entirely comfortable with, with the analysis, as were your engineers and ultimately MDOT and Wayne County engineers.
Understood. I think that the board has a duty to do their due diligence as well, so I'm trying to do that.
Oh, I totally agree.
And that being said, I also noted that there was some data on page 10 of the traffic study that was from 2021, which also seems odd to me considering that you yourself mentioned the COVID effect on all of our stores and businesses, so that too was of concern to I, I also found, when I went on the SEMCOG website, that there was data for the section of Ford Road east of Sheldon, or no, I'm sorry, east of Morton Taylor and then west of Sheldon. So I was wondering, you know, it was curious to me that they chose to use the 2010 numbers from MDOT when they could have maybe perhaps extrapolated for the block between Morton Taylor and Sheldon based on the, which they were also MDOT numbers, but they were posted on the SEMCOG website. So that being said, I, I guess, you know, to me, it makes me wonder about the traffic study. I understand that we did have other outside consultants check the data, and then they agreed with that, and, and that's fine. Just to me, it stood out because I'm a data person and I like to use the most recent, up to date, data. COVID numbers, of course, are a little off, but if we even had something from 2019, like I found to use for the traffic study, that would have made me a little more comfortable.
I totally appreciate it. And being that you, you have a passion for data, I certainly appreciate your desire to try to get what we view as the best source of data. The engineers doing these studies are actually, as you won't be surprised, they're really, they are dictated by traffic manuals and engineering approaches through, through MDOT and other things as to what they can actually use, their abilities to extrapolate. But nonetheless, I totally appreciate your.
Yeah, and I mean, I found MDOT data also from 2019, like I said. I think it might have been good to include in the traffic study a justification for why they did use the 2010 numbers, because that was not included, and that would have perhaps allayed some of the concerns.
The questions? Steven?
Thank you. David, is it possible to bring up the site maps, site plan materials from the packet? Yeah, Brian, I was wondering, is there a way to take us just through the traffic flow of how that's going to work if we bring it up? Just because I, I didn't totally understand it from looking at the material.
I would be glad to do that, but I can only play a traffic person on TV, but we do have attending the meeting virtually Mark Lavoy, if you can find him, and he is actually the person retained by BJ's, he can walk you through that, if Mark, if he can hear me.
Oh, is he on? Okay.
Okay, hang on a sec. Oh.
If we can pull up the visual, that would be certainly helpful, yeah. The good news is everything, you know, we're using existing curb cuts off of Ford Road and everything, essentially stacks onsite, so.
Right, because it's setback, yeah. How is, it's been, the warehouse has been open for, what, five months now or so? How's that going?
It is, Bill Zanoni is with me, the real estate director for BJ's, and he shared with me that it has been a little slower than anticipated, but they are hearing a lot of comments from customers about the absence of the fuel service. And so they're hoping that in fact, that will help solve some of that issue, because they're used to seeing this. Here we go, we do have the plan now, and I'm not sure if you're able to promote.
Maybe the one on page 101 would help a little bit better, because it has arrows, I think, for the traffic.
Is the guy on?
Yeah, Mark, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to introduce myself, my name is Mark Lavoy, and the Site Development Manager with BJ's. Unfortunately, our traffic engineer is not able to attend tonight, so I will do my best to answer your questions. I will point out on page 10, I think there was a question about the 2021 or 2022 numbers, those were the actual counts that were done at the BJ's, at Chesterfield and at other locations to count those traffic numbers for the proposed gas station and for the club.
And Mark, the question is now, trustee Snideman's asking about the actual proposed traffic flow for the site, so if we can go to which sheet would be best to show the intended traffic flow into and out of the site?
And this pages with arrows.
Yeah, I don't know if we have the traffic study available, but there was a distribution, so they basically, they, they project the amount of total traffic that will be coming to the site, and then they do a distribution on percentages of which approaches the traffic will be assumed to be coming from. I'm just looking through the traffic study right now, but it looks like, it's, it, it looks like it's about 30, 31% would be coming from Ford Road, 10, 15% from Morton Taylor, and 13% from Sheldon.
And then how are they funneled through your filling station?
So this, as you can see on the, on the plan here, we have three entrances. Actually, one of these is a entrance only, the top of the plan. You can't see my arrow, but there's, you can see the arrows on the pavement, so there's an inlet coming in right there, that's an entrance to the filling station. And then down at the lower right, there's a two-way, so you can come in and exit here. And then the entrance at the top middle is an exit only. So the vehicles will come in, and you can see how they stack up behind the pumps. We provide enough stacking for three vehicles behind the pumps, so that provides stacking within the, with the onsite, and then, and then it's one-way traffic out, so that everyone funnels out and goes either to the left or to the right, but they don't come back out through.
So the southern. The southernmost one is in, out, or yes?
Correct.
I see that, I can kind of see the arrows.
Yes, that's both, correct. The southern one is.
At Planning Commission, we were also asked to add dedicated arrows for each respective lane directing, so that wouldn't, we wouldn't have crisscrossing or whatever, so that was an addition made post-Planning.
Yeah, I was going to ask about like, do not enter signs for the exit and stuff like that.
Right, yeah, we were asked, and so we'll have all that signage as part of.
How do you feel like, I mean, I, I've not been to a BJ's, but I've seen and been to a Costco's filling station, and they get pretty packed, and especially like on a Saturday morning or something like that. How do you see, have you talked about the overflow into the access road that, that?
Yeah, in fact, the traffic study contemplates those scenarios, and we ultimately, really ultimately provided for the stacking, and that was ultimately one of the things the traffic engineer looked at in terms of where the stacking actually occurs. And these are manned, or there are persons operating at these sites, essentially trying to make sure people are moving and aligning on there, so it was all part of the calculation. And effectively, there's no anticipation of any blocking of the crossroad or the main entrance in the, there, we had to demonstrate that not only to the satisfaction of, of the township's traffic engineers, but also to target. They wanted to make sure there would be no imposition, obviously, on people entering into their site.
Yeah, concerns me a little bit. And then my last question goes back to our last meeting, and what, have you done any research more on the, on the charging stations? Like, I know we talked about possibly a Level 3.1, but that definitely Level 2 and.
We, we had, actually had a meeting with the, I had a meeting with the supervisor a week ago on that, in which we've indicated, you know, we had a bigger conversation about the township's overall electrical vehicle charging ambition. I'm actually meeting with your DDA this month to talk about some strategies around that. And in fact, we've added a language to the PDD amendment, which opens up the possibility of the Level 3 chargers. We also been put in contact with the potential contractor the township will be using as well, so we're in pursuit of those, so we're, we're comfortable with the language that was requested and been agreed to, to achieve those objectives.
Thank you, Mr. Ammon.
Any other board comments? Joe, did you want anything per agreement? Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, thank you. Item G4, consider site plan for mini warehouse true storage.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the attached resolution, approval of the site plan for true storage mini warehouse, whereas project sponsors requested site plan approval for a mini warehouse establishment on the subject parcel at 7444 North Hagerty Road, and whereas Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan hereby approves the true storage mini warehouse site plan in planning, in the subject planning application on the subject tax parcel at 7444 North Hagerty Road, subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to occupy an existing vacant building at 7444 North Hagerty Road parcel as listed for mini warehouse establishment, true storage. The subject site is located on the east side of Hagerty Road, south of Copernic Road. The subject site is zoned LI, light industrial, and mini warehouse establishments are special land uses in the LI zoning district, subject to section 6.02M of the zoning ordinance. The Township Board approved a special land use for the true storage mini warehouse use on February 14, 2023. At its meeting on March 6, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the true storage site plan, subject to conditions. If the site plan is approved, the next steps will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Engineering Services Division and Building and Inspection Services Division for review prior to construction. Dave, do you want to add anything? Mr. Norwood?
Thank you, Supervisor Graham Hudek. I do not have anything to add, but however, the community planner, Patrick Sloan's here to answer any detailed questions.
Patrick, do you have anything to add? Okay, we also have our applicant here, would you like to say something?
Yeah, my name is Yodong Dong, and I'm an engineer with DLZ 449 for Elizabeth Lake Road, Waterford. So tonight, I'm representing my client, True Storage, and requesting a site plan approval from this board, I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? No? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, thank you. Consider approval of the purchase of a new 2023 Vermeer AX17 brush chipper.
Favorite motion of the night. Ma'am Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to Vermeer, Vermeer Midwest for an amount not to exceed $104,902 for the purchase of a new 2023 Vermeer AX17 brush chipper from the subject accounts, and $41,962 from the other subject account, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Our public works staff have to maintain road right-ofways sidewalks and roads for safe package, passage. During the past ice storm and then followed up by a snowstorm, the 1984 brush chipper owned by the township proved to be highly inadequate for effective removal of tree branches and tree debris. In order to prove the necessary level of service, larger brush chipper is necessary. The new Vermeer brush chipper is to be purchased from Vermeer Midwest located in Fowlerville, Michigan. Deputy Director, do you want to add anything?
Just, our last storm, and we had certainly a lot of challenges, and I think with, as our climate is changing, and we're going to be running into some more of these things as our trees are going to be impacted, so I'm very excited to get this new piece of equipment, so we can, we need to get right-ofways open up for public, public safety to be able to serve our, our residents, and this will help us make that happen. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Kate, did you ever hand up?
Sort of, yes. Two questions. The first one is, when it says 1984 brush chipper, what does that mean?
That would be 29 years old, no, 30, 30, yeah.
Okay. That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay. It seems like it's pretty old.
Pretty old, yes.
Older than me.
Yeah, I should mention John Somi from Public Crusaders also to answer any questions.
The other question is, what do we do with the stuff that's been processed?
Do you want?
So currently, we just manage our facility, we start a lot back there.
Okay, so the township's using it?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we had a lot, would we consider giving them to the community?
I'd take some.
Yeah, potentially.
With the equipment that we have, if it wasn't the sharpest, like, most of the most, most.
Well, it was from 1984.
I'd be a little wary of that, because it'd be pretty sharp and pointed, and.
Okay.
Or that ability somewhere else, so.
Okay, understood.
Media I came from my work before here, we definitely share those.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
So this is an extra one, or is this replacing the?
Replacing.
It's time, maybe.
Who else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, consider waiving the bidding process and approve the purchase of a 20, 120, 23 20-foot enclosed landscape trailer.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one 2023 20-foot enclosed landscape. Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one 2023 20-foot enclosed landscape trailer from Kelly &amp; Sons Trailers at 12620 North Telegraph Road in Carlton, Michigan at 48117 for an amount not to exceed $17,169.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Due to the continued supply chain shortages and issues, the Department of Public Works is asking to waive the bidding process and seek approval for the purchase of one 2023 20-foot enclosed landscape trailer from Kelly &amp; Sons Trailer, as they have one in stock to meet the needs of the department. The department has reached out to other vendors, and we are being advised of anywhere from 14 to 20-week lead times. Public Works performs noxious weed ordinance cutting, cutting of the township-owned out parcels, as well as contract mowing of Michigan Avenue for M.D. This landscape trailer will provide safe transportation and security for the equipment used by the public works staff. Kelly &amp; Sons Trailers has provided a quote with their state pricing on an in-stock trailer, which is immediately available to Canton Township in the amount of $17,169. Deputy Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
All I'm adding, we're getting ready for May, when we'll be, start cutting weeds, so this will be part of that equipment for that project. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Anyone, any questions? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider approval of upgrading existing fiber data lines at fire station one.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to create a new purchase order to D2 Technologies LLC in an amount not to exceed $13,000 for installation of upgraded fiber optic cabling between CPS To further, a further move to approve the attached budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The ITI department is seeking to upgrade the fiber optic lines between the Canton Public Safety Division building and the fire station number one. The fiber currently deployed is approaching 25 years in age and has reached its useful service life. To complete this project in the most efficient and cost-effective manner possible, ITI requested pricing from a vendor already involved in portions of the Canton Public Safety Department renovation project, while the construction in the CPSD building is ongoing and the ceilings are currently easily accessible. Director Begaboo, do you want to add anything?
I think it's pretty clear for us. We have an opportunity to do this while the ceiling is open, and it will save us quite a bit of cost if we allow the ceiling to be closed.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Great. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G8, consider approval to purchase Civic Optimize solution.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to create a new purchase order to Civic Plus in an amount not to exceed $18,862.50 for implementation of Civic Optimize.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Since implementation of Civic Plus, this platform has been the repository of township fillable forms from residents. With increasing needs for more robust functionality and accessibility, the township's web committee, clerk's office, and MSD and CLS employees participated in a demonstration of Civic Optimize. After several meetings, they all determined that it would meet the growing digital form needs of residents and employees. Director Begaboo, do you want to add anything?
Wanted to make sure we keep it in mind that this initiative is going to allow us to streamline a few processes that we've been struggling with. So with the implementation of Civic Optimize, we should be able to not just digitize the, where we collect information from residents regarding most of the applications that are being utilized here, but we should be able to mine the data as well, and, you know, do all the necessary reports that are associated to read. I'll take more questions if you do have any.
Questions or comments?
Quick one. Is Civic Optimize newer technology than the Form Center in Civic Plus?
Indeed. Civic Optimizes, how do I put it, is an upgrade from Form Center. It's not, it's not clunky like Form Center.
Thanks.
Kate?
I, I think this is a great idea, so. I think it will be very helpful.
I just want to say that for those who've been part of the technology committee, we do hear all the complaints, and we're doing our best to make sure we remedy some of those things that have been coming in from the community.
Thanks. Michael?
This is the solution that we're going to be using for, for dog licenses in the future, correct?
That's correct.
One of the beautiful things about this is it's going to integrate directly with the ERP solution, so this will cut out a substantial amount of redundant work inside of my office, which is super exciting, especially because if you haven't been to the township administration building in the last couple of weeks, watch, like, my office, we are, we are going gangbusters on passports. We are probably going to quadruple our budgeted revenue this year on passports, and, and then in election season, it's just, it's super inefficient for us to be spending time and energy double entering in information from residents, so super excited about integration and this solution. I think from an efficiency standpoint, it'll pay off in dividends.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G9, consider approval of resolution approving settlement agreements in opioid litigation involving Tiva, CVS, Walmart, and Allergan.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the resolution approving the settlement agreements in opioid litigation involving Tiva, Allergan, CVS, and Walmart, and authorize the township supervisor to sign any necessary documents in the, in order to effectuate the settlement.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The board has been asked to adopt a resolution approving four national settlement agreements in ongoing opioid litigation with manufacturers and distributors of opioids. The settlement agreements are with CVS, Walmart, Allergan, and Tiva for their role in the opioid epidemic. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
Yes, this is just part of ongoing opioid litigation in the country, which the township is a part of. This particular settlement is going to be for approximately $13 billion between these four companies, Tiva Pharmaceuticals, Allergan Finance, CVS Health Corporation, and Walmart, two of which are, or were opioid manufacturers, and two of which were opioid distributors. That settlement amount will then be split between all of the participating states in this settlement, which I think at this time is close to 48 states, and then that settlement amount will be distributed in accordance with a agreed-upon formula, and then once the allocation's made to the state of Michigan, local governments will get a small percentage of, of that settlement amount as well.
Questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G10, consider approval of statement of work with Civic Plus LLC for municode ordinance supplemental services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the statement of work between Canton and Civic Plus LLC, and authorize the clerk to sign on behalf of Canton Township.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Statute requires Canton to codify our ordinances every 10 years. The last recodification was approved in 2014 by the Board of Trustees. For the past nine years, the municipal code corporation has been a company that maintains their code of ordinances, including our virtual portal that provides access to the public and tracks updates and amendments. Municode was acquired by Civic Plus, and the supplemental service model has changed. The current per-page models are realizing a 30% increase as a result, and is recommended that Canton move to a subscription model with an estimated cost of $3,166.90 annually. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add anything?
You said it all. I can answer any questions that anybody has.
Questions or comments? No? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is public comment. So we have some attendees. There's three. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. I'll start here online first, hang on, stay there one second. Anybody online, public comment, public comic online, you can raise your hand, public comment online, seeing none. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please, public comment.
Robert McOsland, 2011 Lots Road. I was here about six weeks ago, and I discussed a policy question in regards to sale or purchase of real estate, and I had a follow-up call, and it was, it was, I was questioning it. They told, the person told me, who called me, I can't remember her name, told me that we had no policy in regards to selling or buying property. You know, I don't know, they said that the question, the answer was, we don't do a lot of it, so we didn't feel we had to have a policy. I'd just like some clarification on it, and with the help of the board, maybe get a policy in place by the end of the year. I think it's something that's needed, and I know this board has, in the past, said that they wanted to be transparent in every aspect of government, and it's just curious for me to know that we wouldn't have that policy in place, but I can see where we may, we haven't used it, so maybe it's just something that was overs, that was an oversight. If you could give me your time or study session to discuss the possibilities of having that policy put in place. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No one else in the room? Okay. All right, thank you. That's the end of public comment. Staff comments? Do we have any comments from the staff? Yes, chief.
I want to update the board, as we all know, on June 21, 2021, Officer Ed Yax was killed by his son, April 27, at 8:30 a.m. He'll be sentenced for that murder. That'll be at the Lenawee County Courthouse.
Thank you. Thank you. Very sad. Any other staff comments? Anything coming up? No? Board comments, we'll start with Kate Bruninsky.
Gosh, it's been a busy few weeks. We've had a lot of events for Women's History Month, which we are winding up this week, right? Just enjoying the, the weather today, and hoping that everyone else got a chance to go outside and enjoy the sun.
Thank you. Stephen?
I wish everybody, I think in the coming weeks, we have Ramadan, we have Easter, and Passover, so to all those, celebrate, and wish you well on those holidays.
Thank you. Diane?
My colleagues, and I think maybe March is, we came in like a lion, and maybe we'll go out like a lamb. Fingers crossed. We are, for online payments of water bills, we are switching over to invoice cloud, so if any of our residents are going to be making payments starting Thursday afternoon, it'll look a little different, just a heads up. It's going to be user-friendly, and I look forward to hearing back from our residents, but it's a new program, and we're very excited to start, launch it on Thursday.
Thanks. Tanya?
Yeah, I have nothing much to add apart from wishing everyone the holidays that are coming up. We have a bunch of Indian New Years that are coming up in the middle of April, too, so it's good to have, you know, springtime is always a good occasion to celebrate with the community, and hopefully, everyone is, you know, SJ5K is coming up in May, and registrations are open for the school district if you, except for a good cause, if people want to sign up for that.
Thank you. Michael?
I have nothing to say.
Happy Ramadan, as was said. Happy Easter. Happy Passover coming up. I guess one also, other thing, we're going to be having a Canton appathon on May 6 and 7 at the summit, and so residents or high school kids are asked to apply, and they will basically be creating an app to help Canton residents. What is the best way to help Canton residents? Can you create an app to do it? PowerPoint presentation? It can be anything. Putting GPS on golf carts, anything like that. So, but we are also looking for sponsors for this, so if you'd like to help sponsor this event, please give us a call, call the supervisor's office. We're going to be giving prizes and having food. It's going to be a 24-hour event. People can stay there or get locked in somewhere to come pretty soon on Facebook and the website. Anything else? Nothing else, so anyone, anything we missed, want to add on? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We're adjourned, thank you.